I'll ask Dr. Gary Housman to lead us and we'll follow with the pledge.
Let's pray. Dear Father, as we come together today, our prayer is simple, and that is that we will pray for wisdom and discernment and courage to make the decisions that will benefit the citizens of With County. Father, as we go through our deliberations, let them be fair, let them be honest, and let them be understanding. We pray that you will bless any decision that we make and the discussions and the debates that we will have. Father, we also pray for our nation, that we will come together and we pray for peace, not just peace politically, but peace individually and peace spiritually. And we do that in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge and allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll break from tradition a little bit and implore that we understand and listen to Gary's prayer. It's very appropriate. We're not high-lowing you here. It just worked out that way. But we need to start a new day in looking at the positives. I've talked to Stephen and Jeremy about the good things in the county. When something good happens, let's try to get it in the media. Seems like that there's no desire in the media to talk about anything good or good news. But I wanted to thank everybody that took part in putting together the county employees' picnic. I see several that were here, and the ones that missed it, you missed something great. It was good fellowship. I think everybody that put it together deserves a big thanks. Nothing runs off of negative. Everything that I know about is positive, whether it's positive water power, whether it's positive from the electrical grid. I don't know of anything that goes forward with a negative. And I'm just asking everybody to open your mind and look at the good things around us and how fortunate we are to be here. Thank you. We have citizens' time next. Who's on the list? Ms. Myers?
I'm on.
Is it still up there?
That's okay.
Oh, here it is. Well, you got on, you're gonna talk about two things.
Right.
I hope one of them's positive.
Well, sort of, and whatever. I was a little distressed about the article in the paper, the schools eyeing health issues. Our superintendent has initiated the CareDox system. It's supposedly to keep our kids safe, collecting their medical records for analytical reasons and reporting. To whom, may I ask? But then the article says that the system does sell information, but you're gonna be safe because they don't include the names. Well, let me tell you, with all the hacking that's going on and everything that could happen, there is no reason why this system can't be hacked and all the kids' medical records would be out all over the place. I feel, I'm a grandmom, I had my kids, this is intrusive, and it's beyond what the schools are meant to do, which is educate our kids. This is government overreach again. Who's going to administrate this program? Do we need it? Is it requiring another employee? And then we have to have a reality check. We should be focusing on teaching, not on parental responsibilities. This could be used against your kids in some nefarious or perverted way. Could you suddenly find your mailbox full of pharmaceutical advertising? Do I trust everybody? No, I don't. And I think we shouldn't be doing this. This is beyond the scope of the school's assignment, which is supposed to be teaching. This collecting of medical records is a private thing. It's almost Orwellian. Who wants to know the details of kids' lives? I'm sorry, this is beyond. We should scrap this, and we should teach the kids cursive writing and let them keep their own medical records at home. It shouldn't be part of our responsibility. Okay, that's one. Sorry, gentlemen. Here's another one. Then we're talking about the grant that was just secured for the wellness center, created for the school employees. It's a grant. It's not in perpetuity. Who's gonna pay for these medical centers? Who's gonna do electric? Who's gonna do buildings? Who's gonna do staff? If you open up our Yellow Pages, there are seventeen providers, doctors and associates in With County. The schools are within reach of two guardian ambulance, this ambulance, we've got the hospital, and then seventeen providers within. Is this a necessity? No, it's not. I'm asking you guys to look at it realistically to the public and start reeling in Dr. Perry, because he's gone beyond the scope of his administrative duties.
Thank you. I'd like to answer that. As you well know, we can't interfere with operation. We've approved their budget. You've got a good message, but you're in the wrong building. Please take that to the school board and explain that to them.
I will. I certainly have, and to the public at large and so on. But the ultimate budget comes from here.
Yeah, and we can't mess with it until next year. And the thing will be up and running from what I read in the paper. Stephen, do you know anything about this? Have we made any kind of agreement that the county's gonna be part of it? Is there gonna be any county month?
There was a preliminary discussion of using the services that they had to possibly assist the county employees, because there's no agreement with that.
Okay, thanks, guys. Just so you know.
Thank you. All right, moving along with citizens' time. Have you had time to read the last minutes and is there a motion?
Second.
Have a motion and second. Are there any comments, anything in the minutes anyone wants to correct or clarify? Hear none, all in favor? Payment of invoices?
Mr. Chairman, if we pay our invoices.
Second.
Have a motion and second, pay the invoices. Any discussion about any invoice you want to pull to discuss? Hear none? You do a roll call vote on this one, Steve. Dr. Housman?
Aye.
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 Vice Chair votes aye. Six, one missing. Old business?
Mr. Chairman, at the last meeting, you all inquired about Appalachian Power and the 138 KB line, Jackson's Ferry, and all of it to Progress Park in Eastville and on the line coming from Land into Progress Park and Future. We have representatives here from AEP to discuss that. I don't know which order they're gonna speak in, but Ms. Begley, George Porter, and Courtney.
Morning.
Good morning.
I appreciate you guys giving us an opportunity to come out and give you a brief update. As you know, we have a lot of work going on in Appalachian Power currently. So normally, our project managers will come out and give a more detailed update on what we have going on, but they're in different areas of different parts of the states right now, so I'm filling in, so I'll do the best I can. Again, my name is George Porter. I'm the project outreach specialist with AEP Transmission. I cover West Virginia, Virginia, Kentucky. My main responsibility, I'm the liaison between our company and the community, make sure that our message gets out consistently to our community as well as you guys, handle any issues, concerns that may come up as far as our projects, and hold open houses and things of that nature. The projects that Mr. Stephen was representing or referring to, the With Area Improvements Project, that's the line that's going from Jackson's Ferry down to Progress Park. As you guys are aware, that crosses 77. That line is completed. It's up. It's ready to be put in service, but right now, there's, and as my project manager explained, there are some legal issues that are happening right now that are going on between landowners, and we are yet to put that in service. Once that is cleared up, we'll be ready to flip the switch, and that line will be energized. But right now, it's just some negotiations that are still happening behind closed doors, I guess, and once that is squared away, then we'll be able to get that energized and up and running, and power will be flowing. As far as the Blan area improvements project, that's the one that we currently have going on now, and that's the one I handed you guys in your packet. If you guys remember, we announced that project in January of 2015. We had held an open house in March of 2015 as well. That's where we invited the community out. It was at Blan Elementary School. I got feedback, comments, got questions, took all the information that we received at the open house, and we filed for a CPC in with the SEC in September of that year, and we received approval from the SEC in June of 2016. We actually started construction of that line at the end of '16. Did you guys know that line was originally built in 1925? Obviously, not many things are built to last close to 100 years, so it's just time to upgrade. We want to do it for reliability as well as economic development and growth in the area. So we're taking that 20-mile line, which is a 69-kilovolt line, and we're gonna upgrade that to 138 transmission line. We're also gonna build about six new miles of 138-kilovolt transmission line. So new infrastructure, new poles, new wire, new conductors, reliable service to our customers. Obviously, we can't guarantee it's gonna eliminate all outages, but it gives us an opportunity that if outage does occur, we can get your power restored a lot quicker than we normally could dealing with infrastructure that was built almost 100 years ago. So we're currently working, if you guys look at your maps that I provided you, so this line goes through With County, Blan County, up into Mercer County, West Virginia, about a mile of it. So we're currently working on the portion of the line right now from South Bluefield in Mercer County down to the new substation that's being built in Blan County. We expect to be done with that by the end of, let's see, by the end of this year. Once we're done with that portion of the line as well as that substation, we'll start on the portion that goes from the Town Creek Substation down into Progress Park. That's the part that enters into With County. There is a portion of the line, as you guys see on your map, there's a blue line there that we're gonna remove that goes into the With Substation. About a mile of that line, once we start removing that line, we're gonna retain the easements under Appalachian Power. The rest of that, which is about two miles, we're gonna release that back to landowners. We're gonna completely take the structures down, take all the wires down, but a mile of it coming out of With Substation, we're gonna keep the easements under Appalachian Power. The rest of it, we're gonna release it back to the landowners. The part from Town Creek Substation down to Progress Park, majority of that line right away has been acquired. There's a couple landowners we're still negotiating with right now. So right now, we've only started putting foundations in. We've started a little access road clearing as well, but we plan to start line construction on this portion down at the Progress Park by the beginning of this year. Beginning of, uh, beginning of '18, I'm sorry. That'll last from the beginning of '18, and we should be completed with the entire project by the end of '18, and that's when we'll put it in service. Like I said, my responsibility mainly is to deal with the public. To date, we have had very few complaints, issues, or concerns as far as the project. We try to be proactive, send updates when we can to communities and let them know what we're doing. If there's gonna be a major road crossing, I know we haven't done the best job that we would like to do as far as giving you guys updates on what's happening, but our goal is to be proactive, let residents know as well as you guys know if there's gonna be any inconvenience to the community. So we will continue to try to do that, and we answer any questions that we may get from the community about our project. You guys have any questions or any?
Ms. Porter, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank EPCO and you people for thinking ahead and doing the proper maintenance before we have major outages, and I'm sure this plan is gonna make our energy more reliable because you are doing the necessary maintenance work and building the infrastructure ahead. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Also, I want to mention, this Blan project is an $80 million investment. Once it's put in service, we do expect, and our tax people estimate it, about an annual income of $180,000 to With County once the project's put in service. So that'd be in addition to what we're already paying each year. So I always like to end on a good note.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
On that note, I guess, the current line that's in but not energized yet, is the line that'll show up on the revenue on the state corporation until it is energized? Is that correct?
Correct.
So it will be the end of this year energized, and next year should see that on.
Yeah, we'll energize that, then we'll file for rate recovery, and then you guys will start getting payments on that.
On a separate note, and it may not be a field you can assist with at all, the improvements been made at Jackson Ferry Substation, are those taxable increases or amounts?
They are. Anytime we have, so when we take a look, we take a look at the assets that we are already paying on, and of course, every asset has depreciation value. So what they'll do is they'll take a look at any assets and how much they've depreciated. And once we add in the new assets, then you guys get the bump on top of whatever additional count. So any new, anything we add as far as substation, line, transmission structures, you guys will see a bump, an increase as far as taxing out.
Do you have any idea of the timeframe on that substation improvement?
That I don't know off the top of my head, but I can definitely shoot you an email and let you guys know. Bye.
Y'all are now standardizing at 138 on transmission, aren't you?
Well.
On the low end, because up in that line is gonna help you and it'll help our ability on the consumer end.
Right. A lot of construction that did, that happened in the early 20s, it was built at 69. We're finding now that 138 is more reliable. The thing about 138, it keeps us at 100-foot right-of-way. We try to stay around those whiffs. A lot of the existing right-of-ways have already been, we have to supplement because 69 was normally built to 60 or 80 feet. So we figured if we put it at 138, that's a reliable source and a reliable number that helps, like you said, provide a reliable service. Anything else, guys? All right, thank you for your time.
Okay, under old business, Stephen, do you have any other?
No, thank you, Chairman. This is all over.
All right. Ms. Lori Nguyen, is the Brink's Truck backing up out there yet?
Not yet, but we're getting closer. Won't be long, it will be. Well, good morning. Mr. Hale, you spoke earlier about positive things, so in addition to our financials, hopefully, I'm gonna cover some positive things. First of all, I do want to thank you all for being willing to fund the employee picnic that we had. I want to thank Stephen for initiating that, allowing the employees to plan that. I think they had a good time, and I know the ladies in my office commented that there were people that worked for the county that they had no idea worked here because there's departments that we don't see. We don't see necessarily the water department, the wastewater departments, a lot of those folks outside of Ann and Dawn Chris. That's pretty much the extent of who we see in those departments. So it was nice for them to get to see a lot of other folks. Of course, a lot from the sheriff's office we don't normally see because they don't come to our area of the compound. So, but I do want to thank you all for having that. I think it's a great thing, and I hope we do continue to do it annually. My next thing before kind of getting into a little bit more business, I do have a new employee in the office, Kelly Calley, and she came with me this morning. I extended the invitation to her to attend the meeting, and she cheerfully accepted, and I was shocked because I just did not expect her to want to come. So she's come to see what you guys do as well as far as our board meetings.
Well, Lori, I'm shocked that you were shocked.
Well, I always ask, I always ask my employees if they'd like to attend, and usually, they just say, "No, thank you," or "No," you know, because, you know, they're doing whatever. But when I asked this morning, she's like, "Sure, I'll go. What do they do?" And I said, "Well, you know, they're making decisions on things going on." And I said, "You can kind of see them in action," so to speak. So, but I'm glad that she came with me this morning, but she started with me on Friday, so she came in in time to be able to join in with the picnic and get inundated with a lot of county faces that I told her she won't see until we have the picnic again next year. So a lot of people, she really, really got inundated on Friday.
You didn't tell her this was a new employee benefit you were taking over to the zoo, did?
A new employee requirement, effective July 1. Okay, and from that, I'll go on into our financials, and then I'll address some other things with you, gentlemen. But currently, in the consolidated account, we have $46,602,580. And of that, $28,000, or excuse me, $28,411,102 is in the general fund. And of course, those numbers are noted in the July financial statement. We're kind of at a slow month, and especially tax side will start picking up around the bend pretty soon, and we'll have the Brink's Truck backed up that Mr. Hale referred to earlier. But hopefully, we'll be able to get taxes issued October. David's working really hard. Commissioner's Office is working really hard, so we're, and being the end user, we're just sort of hanging out and waiting until we get our turn to start diving into all of it. But hopefully, everything will stay on cycle or pretty close to cycle for us. Any questions on the financials at this point?
One thing, Lori, I appreciate the effort that y'all made in informing us, but I'm always looking for taxes that are already on the books. With the amount of traffic that we see on 81 and we eat out more than we used to, if you go over to Denny's and those places, they're full almost 24 hours. But if you look at the meal stacks, it hasn't changed much.
Right.
And I'm just concerned that we're not getting enough of this public, that that's where our best dollars are, is people passing through here and leave some money and get on their way. And that chart that showed the last few years, it just doesn't make sense that motoring public, and you see them in the restaurants, but the numbers don't go up any.
And a lot of it, too, unfortunately, the town. You know, we have restaurants out in the county. We don't have a lot of restaurants. Most people, when they go out to eat, they're going to Ruby Tuesday's, they're going to CJ's Pizza, they're going to Applebee's, the Bowling Wilson. The town benefits from those. Our draw on restaurants is basically what we have along the 81 corridor, the Denny's, Burger Express in Fort Chiswell, I'm sure is a big location for us. You know, you're, kind of your smaller restaurants where you can stop in, you can get a sandwich or you can get a hot dog or a little Hunt Brothers pizza or something along that line. Of course, and on here, too, the numbers that are reflected for meals tax, as far as the revenue year-to-date, the $77,000, that's going to be what came in by July the 20th that was for collection during the month of June as far as our restaurants are concerned, or our folks that provide meals and submit tax back to us. So when you're, when I'm here at the board meeting, this is actually two-month-old data, essentially, as far as collections.
But it still takes up a section of the tax calendar that's the same every year.
It does, yeah.
And the numbers are just not there.
Yeah.
You know, the big one in the county is, I guess, is still McDonald's that's exited.
Probably, I'm sure.
But.
McDonald's are always huge.
And the other McDonald's is in Roque Creek, isn't it?
Yes.
So just in the county, you report that number differently from what's in the town.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because for us, our bigger ones, and Faye, correct me if I'm wrong, it's probably gonna be like McDonald's, the Burger Kings, the Denny's.
And the truck stops.
The truck stops, yeah. The restaurants and the truck stops, the Burger Kings, the McDonald's, I would guess are probably our five top contributors, because then you get into your smaller places on a level, yes, Stoots' Corner, Speedway Market.
Yeah, but they're not the ones I'm really worried about because of the volume, but I think even the Wendy's reports through the truck stop, don't they?
Mm-hmm.
So do y'all ever take any kind of analytical look at that of what it's done over the last five years? It's not reasonable that that number should stay level. It's certainly not reasonable that that number should go down.
I know there's numbers you all can share with us, but if we could take something like, take restaurant X and do that over a four- or five-year time period and see, that would at least give an idea. I know there's data that you're unable to share, but at least we can try to determine if there is some gaps in there.
Yeah, we'll look at it and see what we can do about it.
Yeah, and I'll defer that to Faye and her folks because they collect the meals tax and bring us the checks, but they're the ones that handle that, so I'm gonna defer that over to the commissioner's office.
Great, thank you. I won't bother you anymore.
Oh, that's okay. I know you're paying attention. And my next item that I have, on Friday, this was kind of discussed just a little bit at the picnic, for those of you that were there, but I want to make you all aware that not only in addition to having a new employee in the office, I'm also losing another employee. Debbie Repass has been in the office for 45 years. She has spent a lifetime there. And she's going to be retiring, or her last day of work is going to be September 15th, so we are hosting a reception for her, an all-day reception. We're going Debbie-style with this. So it will be a floating reception. I would like for each of you to come by and visit with her that day. Extend the invitation. We'll be sending out formal invitations later, goes as well to administration, which I'll send invitations out to the departments, but please come by and say thank you to her.
What day is it?
September the 15th is her last day. That's a Friday. And so then, in going into that, Debbie will actually still be considered on payroll through the end of October in order to receive pay for her accumulated time that she has earned, which she's donating a lot back to us, believe me. With her leaving the end of October, we're into our busy time of tax season as far as the first part of November. So, and I've talked with Stephen a little bit. We need to have further discussions, but one thing I would like for you all to consider is the possibility of allowing me, as soon as I can get a new employee in the office, hired as a bookkeeper for that position to replace Debbie, try to bring them in and start getting them trained so that they can at least keep things going in the back office. I'm not going to be able to put this person out on the front lines as far as waiting on taxpayers when they come in, because I just don't feel like we're gonna have the time to train them efficiently enough that they can wait on everyone to be able to look up what they need to. But I need to have somebody that, we're not gonna be penalized out front in being able to wait on folks, but can keep the office going in the back. So basically, as we're entering in our revenue each day, being able to post that, kind of keep check on things if somebody calls to inquire about something, they're gonna know enough by that point that I can let them do their job. So I want you to consider the possibility of overlapping what I'll say, a fifth employee in my office outside of myself with Debbie's pay as far as her accumulated leave in October. It would be tight right now to get someone in the early part of October, but at least by mid-October, but I think I could get someone through enough that they know what they need to do and can understand what we need to have going on, because I don't want to hire somebody and have them sitting in the back for a month and a half before I can work with them, or any of us can work with them, and say, "Here's what we need you to do, and here's how you do it."
So you're talking about the county paying the salary until they can be put on comp board?
Yes.
Right?
It's roughly $3,500.
Yeah. It won't even be a month's pay, honestly, because I don't think I would have time to get somebody in early part of October.
If you all agree to it, I'll have Bruce put the numbers and everything together, but I think if you all have a motion to authorize her to hire an employee under county pay starting probably by October 1st, then we'll get.
Or whenever she can find somebody.
I don't think it'd be any earlier than October 1st.
Okay.
Because we're already to the end of August.
I will make that motion because it makes sense to me.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hear none? Roll call?
Aye.
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 Vice Chair votes aye.
I appreciate it a lot. Hate to see Debbie go. She's a ray of sunshine, but you have to go at some point.
Okay, the next one is the commissioner. Ms. Faye, you have anything?
First of all, I'd like to say, when I first walked in this morning, I thought we had two trustees sitting here with their arms.
Maybe they ought to be.
I would like to say.
They're called on the podcast. Say, would that be an improvement?
I'd like to say thank you for the counter. I'd like to say thank you for the county picnic, for our employees too. Everybody enjoyed it, and I hope it'll become a yearly thing. And Mr. Hale, we will check on the meals tax for you. Okay? Anything else? Anything they have...
Really, it's for us. We need money, and that's one source of a revenue stream that I really would like to see us not have put the burden on Lando.
Oh, I know. And another thing, you know, a lot of the small ones will not pay.
What do you mean they won't pay?
And we, they file their forms with us, but they won't pay. We have several of the small ones that won't pay. Our office can't. We send out a letter, a certified letter, to them when they don't pay, and then we have to turn it over to the Treasurer's Office. We can't, we can't collect, because we don't collect money.
All right.
And...
So, it's Lori's job to go get them.
So, but that is one of the things. We have several of the small ones that just won't pay.
Lori, have you had that problem of...
We've had some.
What is the small one? Tell me what small is.
I'll say your mom and pop restaurants. Mr. Lincolnson Fay's office, he actually handles the meals tax stuff, and he's brought a couple over to me a few times since I've been down here. I send letters out, and a lot of times they'll pay. Some come in and say, well, I can pay you $100 a week. But you really try to stress to them, this is money that you're collecting on top of what you're charging for your meals, in addition to state sales tax. You're using someone else's money. That's a felony.
It's trust money.
It is. That's what we try to tell them, but...
Well, why can't you prosecute?
If they come in and they're willing to start paying, I'm okay with it. I let them do that as a good faith gesture that they will come in. Now, some, they'll come in and they'll pay right off of that, because they do not want you to take them into court. Others, you still have the issue, they'll send you meals tax, then they write you a bad check from the meals tax. So, not only are you collecting, trying to collect the meals tax, you're trying to collect the return check, in addition to keeping them up to date with their monthly. So, and it's been a little bit since I've had anyone. So, Fay and I probably need to get together and see who's behind where that we need to start breaking again, as far as collecting.
That's a small part of the, of the big picture of county taxes.
Because your larger facilities, they send their money in like clockwork. They do fine. You just have the smaller ones that are...
The moms and the pops that won't...
The ones that, you know, they sell the hot dog, or the little sub sandwich, or the pizza, or maybe a cheeseburger and fries. You have the ones that are like that.
I keep getting told that we've straightened out problems with the chain stores that have a deli, and we both know what the law is. If they prepare that food there and they sell it there, they're supposed to pay. But if it gets checked out through the grocery line, they're not paying.
I've been to the one you're talking about. I've sent my employees down to buy stuff, and they charge every time. And I've talked to the manager several times, you know, that, on that. But every time, any of my employees, I even sent my daughter down there one day. She's a traveling nurse in the county, and she was down on that end. And I said, will you stop in and buy something out of the deli? And they charged her tax, and I know they didn't know her, so...
But did she pay at the deli?
No, she took, I told her to take it to the cash register, and she'd bought some other things too, and they did charge her, so, you know, so I don't know.
And is there any regulation that they have to show the county tax? You know, some restaurants just show taxes. One in particular that I know has run up a big tax bill from time to time. If they just show taxes, I thought the regulations said they had to show the county tax separate.
I'm not sure exactly.
If you looked at tickets, a lot of times it will have like tax one, tax two.
Yeah, a lot of them will, but I don't know what the regulations are on that.
Well, it's money that's not imposed on residents as much, and I hope y'all can keep an eye on it and keep providing.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You got anything from the Water Committee? Is that why Mr. Vaughn's here?
Hopefully, we've got a Water Committee report.
Okay.
The Water Committee met on August 17th, 2017, makes the following recommendations. First is to amend and appropriate $32,500 to do 9050-470420, which is the required contingency for the Speedway Base 3 Contract 2. Need an explanation? Anybody?
Yeah, we don't need a second discussion. Anybody need an explanation of whatever you just said?
Mr. Vaughn's here and can give the full explanation. Basically, this is the final money on the grant and loan that we have on Speedway that we've now gone to three phases with. For the amount that is remaining in the books, and for the project, and for the thing that you're getting ready to award next, rural development requires a certain amount of contingency. And in order to meet that contingency requirement, we are amending and appropriating this money into it. Hopefully, we won't spend any of this money, it's just be shown and there's contingency to meet that requirement.
Is that loan money you already have?
This is grant money that we already have.
Okay.
So, if we don't, if we don't spend this grant money down by the end of this year, it goes back, so...
Any other discussion? You're none? Dr. Halden?
Aye.
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 And the Vice Chairman was there.
All right, and the last thing is to award Speedway Base 3 Contract 2 to King General Contractors Incorporated of Bristol, Virginia, based on their low bid and the amount of $378,080.
It doesn't need a second since it's come from committee, is there any discussion? You're none? Mr. Horni?
Aye.
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 Vice Chairman was there. Is that all your reports?
That's all the Water Committee had.
County Administrator?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I express appreciation on the half of staff and everyone as well for the events last Friday. And I will take full responsibility for the name tags that some people said, why do we have name tags? But for people like Ms. Kelly and others that are there, and like what Lori said, there's people out in the county that you never see, and you don't know who they are, and it's just something for everyone to get to know who they were. And I had most of them put in one department. They were on there as well, so we appreciate it, and everyone seemed to have a very good time.
On County Administrator's report, the first thing you've got is just information about the change in leadership at District 3 governmental, Mike Guy stepping down, David Fort Richardson will be taking over, and I just included that for informational purposes. Second item is for informational purposes also, this came in at a good time for Finance Department is currently working on getting ready to all of our year-end reports. And this is our GASB statement for the upcoming year for the net pension liability, which is included, the number will be included within our audit. No, I actually need it just informational purposes only as well. The next item is the VDOT Fall Transportation Meetings. The August 31st is the meeting for our location at the Prior Center at UVA Wise. If any of you all are interested in going, please let me know. I think last year, Mr. Hale and Mr. Reeves and I went to that one, I believe. And it's always good to go, stay in touch with the representatives from the district. If anybody's interested in going, please let me know. I think Mr. Vaughn has a conflict, and he may look to try and look at another one in another location. But just wanted to let you know on it.
That it?
That's all on it. VDOT Smart Scale Projects, Mr. Vaughn has been attending work sessions and training sessions on this to assist with the applications for Smart Scale. They will begin with some public meetings, working with Kim Lee Horn coming in and working with the county to put together our applications. Unless I hear otherwise from you all, or additions from you all, the two primary projects that we are working on is, one, the connector road for Progress Park, and number two is Exit 77 improvements in that area. So, that's our primary, two focus points. With the layout of our Expo Center in place, we can work with Kim Lee Horn on that one to actually see where the road is going, where a future road could go, and include that in the application process.
Does Mr. Vaughn know what a resource Donnie Nessevery is?
Yes.
Donnie, after that last awards, made it clear that how well and how much fluff you put in your request does have value. It may not be that accurate, but it has a lot of value in getting their attention. For the ones that he wasn't there, there were only 10 projects in Bristol District last time that got funding, and amazingly, five of them were in Marion. And Marion never comes to anything. So, they had somebody working for them, but five of the 10 were in Marion. There was one in Bristol, and I think, obviously, there had to be one in Scott County, and none of it happened this way. I don't think Tazewell County got anything, Russell County didn't get anything. But for five of the projects to go to Marion, and they weren't Smith County, they were right in the Marion business area. So, I don't know how smart that was, but I don't know how they had the traffic count to justify it.
And part of it also comes into, in the way the scoring and everything work, those smaller dollar figures, when you calculate them and divide them out, it helps out as well?
Yeah, a matrix can say whatever you want to. And this Smart Road is a hide-in-the-bushes name for a matrix.
Mr. Vaughn's been attending those meetings. In addition, you all appointed Mr. Vaughn in my place on the Mount Rogers PDC Rural Technical Committee, and Mr. Nessevery attends most of those meetings. So, he's working with him directly at those meetings as well.
The big strategy change that Mr. Nessevery has figured out, the secret, is the way the economic development factor, which is where this area can get more points, is being calculated based on square footage of the facility. And we're going to reparse Progress Park and now the Expo Center, and we hope to gain more points in the next little base on that strategy.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions about that?
Next item is victim witness grant, and this does require action to accept this grant. Basically, we've been awarded $71,000 in federal funds and $23,850 in the state special fund, for a total award of $95,402. And we recommend acceptance of this grant for the victim witness program. I would say move.
Second. Have a motion and a second to accept the grants. Is there any discussion? These are pure grants, no matching funds?
Correct.
All right, sounds good. All in favor, Dr. Halden?
Aye.
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 And the Vice Chairman was there. Nick?
Next one, VACO was once again doing the holiday ornaments. They did this a couple of years ago. And if you all remember, we sort of, we put out a request for ornaments from the public, and they came in, and y'all selected one, or a group of peers selected one, and then went on to the Governor's Mansion. Doesn't have to be done that way, but I thought I'd say if you all want to do that again, it's a good opportunity for some of these little crafty individuals that enjoy making crafts and things to come up with ideas. And ideally, they're based something on, something within the locality or tie into locality. So, I think it's a good thing, if you talk about public information, the good news out there, I think it's good for our public information officer to work again, to get some proposals in, and we'll send them in to VACO.
Well, that needs a recommendation, not an action.
If there's no objections to it, we'll proceed with it that way.
All right. Any objections? Here none. Let's make a lot of noise about Christmas ornaments. You got anything else to add?
Next one is inland port, and there's nothing in the package there. As all of you all know, back in the late 90s, we originally got $1.5 million in EDA funds. We borrowed a little over $2 million in rural development funds to create the access road coming in here, to get this inland port graded, and to grade the road that eventually ended up going to Amcor and Gatorade. When we finished that, our goal was marketing that as an inland port area. At that point in time, you know, to be successful with it requires Norfolk Southern's agreement. At that point in time, Norfolk Southern had an interest in working in the Elliston area. Recently, our Economic Development Committee has met with a couple of individuals that have inquired about inland port or even intermodal facility at that location. Congressman called me the other day, he was around here talking to some people about it. He's interested in it. The individuals that came and met with our Economic Development Committee have some connections that they think could help us with it. The conversation was Friday after, as the board package was getting ready, so I just put this in here for discussion. But the request was making certain that the Board of Supervisors was interested in pursuing, trying to attract an inland port or intermodal facility at our park. And part of this is coming from, obviously, Montgomery County. They thought they were wanted, and then they ended up having some things about not being wanted. I would like your all's input, but I would request either we consider adopting a resolution at our next meeting, or authorization for a letter from the Chairman to go out to our Congressman and Senators indicating our desire for supporting an inland port or intermodal facility at this location. The goal is trying to find some money to be put within the federal budget that may be able to assist or encourage a rail company to come to the table to maybe make a move.
Was any spade and footwork done in the 90s that showed a need, and it could be an operational, good business plan?
In general, there was information with the EDA application that primarily hit on the things that we talked between our location on the interstate, it's a great place for an intermodal transfer facility to do it. An intermodal facility might stand a better chance than a full inland port, and that was aimed more at a full inland port. But I could, I don't know what was put together when that application went in. I know when I first got here, I got a copy of that file of the receipt of the grant and everything that went into it, but I could see between us and the JIDA what information they had at that time that went into that award.
What do you think about referring this for review to the Economic Development Committee?
No, just...
We've got transportation experts on the committee. But my question is, if we go down this road and we had another industry show up, would it derail us from making that property available to another industry? We got a graded building site there, and I just don't want us to commit to something that would keep us from selling it and bringing more industry. You know, Lane is in some mode of expansion right now, and that, something could come up with a hot economy. And if we start down this road making, intermodal, I think is the right idea, and I would defer to Stephen to talk about that, Steve Willis. But I just don't want to start down a lane that we can't turn around if a better opportunity comes along.
Can I ask you a couple of questions?
Yes, sir.
One, I probably should, but I don't. What's intermodal mean? Is it just various forms of transportation, or what?
Putting box trailers while we run, taking the landing gear off.
Putting box trailers while we run, taking the landing gear off, putting them on rail car, shipping them when they get to the port, pick them up, put them back on a chassis, or put them on a boat.
And the difference between that and inland port?
Both directions versus one direction. Inland port is you're bringing something from overseas, you're bypassing the port, you're bringing it to, say, Royal Now, clear it through customs, and then put it on chassis, and then deliver somewhere in the United States.
Okay, so with inland port, it's coming in?
And can go out.
With the intermodal, it can go, could work either way?
Good intermodal opportunity with county right now. Gatorade ships probably 200 loads to Texas versus using a tractor trailer with 200 trucks, 200 drivers, and the emissions that go with them. They send them out, load them on rail, ship them out.
Okay, well then, I mean, why, what's an advantage of an inland port then, if an intermodal can work either way?
Your export business. New River Valley had a customs office for how long, Stephen?
Still got one.
Had a what office?
Oh, no, it had it for years.
Custom office at New River Airport, that if the truck assembly people wanted to send something in, it didn't have to come to Newark, it'd come right to Dublin, and the best job that probably the customs people had was being stationed at Dublin. They didn't have a lot of immigrants trying to come in in boxes, and they didn't have anything going out. But that office was there for a long time, and they closed it because there wasn't a lot going on. But these things with the intermodal, like Steve said, where we are, if you had something coming from California, and you wouldn't believe how much stuff is trucked across this country, is offloaded at Port Los Angeles, and then trucked to warehouses here, and then redistributed. Well, if you got a load of stuff, and you wanted to put it in the intermodal, this is a good location because, like he said, we're a hub.
Well, intermodal is kind of like a distribution center.
It's a distribution of boxes.
Okay, all right.
It gets trucks off the highways, one time.
But with intermodal, there would not, and help me here, would not be, you know, a customs thing, or can there be?
They can be, they can coexist in the same facility.
So they can act as an inland port or intermodal?
I think, the reason I use both terms is just to keep it open.
Yeah. Did Congressman Griffith use both terms? Because I talked to him, it was just inland port.
Inland port, but when I talked with him about both, you know, intermodal, inland port, yeah, both were there. He understood, even if it was just an intermodal facility, not a true inland port. Inland port takes, obviously, more action, more of the state of getting in with the Port of Virginia and things like that, so one may be a step to bringing in the other in the future.
All right, I have three other questions left, if I can remember. One is, do we have the space? I mean, is that bottom area down in there, is it large enough for an inland port or intermodal? And if not, do we have the capability? I know that's on the south side of the park, so we can't expand southward, but is there another area that we can go to if we need to expand it?
I don't know that it's not big enough, it is big enough, it's how we market it before, and we've looked at it and seen. As far as expansion, that property itself is somewhat limited, but if we had to come up further on our rail line and use one of our sites, if it took coming up to 35 or 32 to make an inland port up there, it would still be a rail surge site, it could be done up there.
I'm assuming that nothing's going to sit there very long. I mean, I know things will be coming in and going out, but not anything, yeah. Second thing, what was Blacksburg and Christiansburg, what was their objection to?
I don't remember.
You want me to do that?
Yes.
Traffic. On 460, they were worried about the trucks coming in and going out, getting the boxes and delivering. And when I say box, I mean trailer.
Right, okay.
They didn't want their roads cluttered with that much traffic.
Their roads are cluttered anyway, okay. And the third thing, I guess maybe, you know, Mr. Hell answered it a little bit, but what would be the downside of pursuing this? Because right now, we have, I mean, we have some adequate room out there for Progress Park, for other industries if they come in. I mean, is there, and I understand what you were talking about, but I mean, is there, right now, do we see a downside to it? Is there something I'm missing?
It won't be a big revenue producer. It's not going to provide a lot of jobs. I don't see the upside in revenue, because you can't tax the railroad of what comes through there, right? The railroad pays on footage of track, don't they, Stephen? And they have a huge influence, but my only point, if somebody comes in that needs a rail siding, that site is shovel-ready, ready-to-go, and I just didn't want to contaminate it by having something hanging over it that we would be arguing waiting for intermodal. I think it's a great idea, it works. If you see the trains that come through on the main line, there's 150, 200 cars that are nothing.
Those containers.
But containers, and they may be going to California or wherever, and they seem to be loaded both ways. There's a lot of traffic on the railroad right now. Railroad claims they're losing a lot of money, but they're sure hauling a lot of freight. So, that was informational.
Yeah, and we'll put it on the Economic Development Committee report, meeting for further discussion and a recommendation coming back if that's acceptable.
Okay, what else you got?
Included in there, a time schedule proposed for the Apex bidding timeline. What we've got is planning to have the advertisement for bids out this Saturday. Mr. Vaughn has been in touch with plan rooms, has been in touch with printers on timeframe and cost of printing the plans out of the advertising in our regional newspapers, and send those directly to possible bids. The stormwater management plan is still under review. They have received the latest comments back from DEQ, they are making the revisions. We have a meeting today, phone call, we have phone calls this weekend, I don't know which day it is right now, with Jeff Spickert and Bobby Lane from the Lane Group checking on the status of it, the changes that are being made, if we can get the changes in before we put the bids out, or if all of those changes go into our addendum number one following now. Our goal is that it doesn't have a mandatory pre-bid meeting here on September 12, and bid being received on Friday, September 29.
Stephen, I've got a question. Has Wayne given you anything on those clarifications and corrections that are now way past due?
The one, well, they have worked in, the ones that we talked about in the meeting, a lot of them are dependent upon the
Building pad.
The building pad and all that information, which Baker has just recently submitted all that information into them to put those into the design plans. And that is the one that, that's the one thing that would make it certain, we've got all those before we put this out on August 26. Worst-case scenario, this slides by one week out in the entire process for that, and that's what we're trying to prevent from happening.
Bill, those hubs that are out there marked, are they right on the money, or are they just close?
They're close because traffic's settled by driving up with the GPS unit on his truck and putting them here, so I mean, probably within two, three feet that they're placed.
Well, those being benchmarks that are absolutely correct shouldn't hold up the bid process. If we could get some of those barrels from the water plant, those plastic barrels, let's put some sand in them and set those at the corner, and it'll give everybody a grasp of how big that building really is. They don't have to be within two feet for the bidding process, and what could hold it up and push it any longer off? I didn't catch what.
As long as, right now, from advertisements and the printing of the plans and everything, we have no, nothing there that would delay the process of going out, and once we talked to Jeff and them about the DEQ side of it, that was the one thing that was mentioned in here, was where we stood on that stormwater management, and I don't see that holding us up at this point in time. I think we can go ahead and get the bid out with it, with the plan that is in there, if we can get the update from them of what they're submitting, that's best, but it still gives time for that addendum to have the answer back at that point in time. We're just trying to keep from getting into a situation of where, as Bill mentioned earlier, you don't get any of that DEQ before you have time to get an addendum to one or two out to them, and that to do an entire change order on final stormwater plan.
The last hard item on the site grading is the concrete ditch near Pond One, and that's close to start today.
They're working down there this morning.
Yes, sir.
And that's in the initial contract to pour that concrete ditch?
Yes, sir.
We're still on track to go ahead, go through the procedure, get a low bid, go ahead and negotiating with them, and then go to review, but don't start any work until we got the permit. So the one thing you might want to check, Bill, is make sure that language in there in the bid documents, don't say we will notify within 30 days. Let's fudge on that a little bit, and change that to 60 days and no work until the county issues a notice to proceed. Scott, do you have any problems with that? You can go on and take it off, and get ready to go, and the day we get that permit, you give them a notice to proceed. If a contractor, low bidding contractor's got enough courage, he can go ahead and order the building package, knowing that our intent is there, and be eating away at that two-month delivery on the building package.
Kind of delete.
Right. Stephen, you got any comments on moving forward with that?
Well, if we're going to do that now, what if we use, let me make a motion, that we hire part-time a consultant, preferably our former county administrator, Dalton, to advise us if needed as we go forward?
Okay, I have a second.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
You're talking about consultant, you're not talking about project manager?
No.
You're not talking about somebody that's there every day and taking care of every little thing?
No, if we have a question, somebody we can talk to.
So basically, as an engineer?
I have a question. How do you avoid the procurement process?
I think it's part-time, it's on-demand. If Bill wants to call in to substitute for half a day, you don't have a procurement comp when you hire a part-time person at the border department.
That's in the legal, you're talking about hiring a non-governmental entity, your person to be a contractor with the county.
No, I thought the whole thing of being part-time is so you're not an employee, and we don't have to pay you any benefits. That's why we really do that little scam.
I'd have to look at the code, but I thought any public contract for any kind of services has to go through the procurement. Unless it's a small purchase procedure, which follows under Wood County procurement policy, which I need to review, but if local government bodies contract to get non-governmental services, or to get services from a non-governmental contractor, generally, the Public Procurement Act applies to that, and they'd have to give requests for proposals or bids or something.
Stephen, what is our small procurement?
Basically, what we've got is anything under, when you're talking buying goods, anything under $2,000 can be obtained, about quote, anything $2,000 to $30,000 requires at least two or more quotes from the service providers.
He's saying buying goods.
Buying services, there's a state rule, Scott.
I just need to look at it to see, but it may be the same thing, I don't know.
State rule is that you can go up to $50,000 for buying services, unless you have a procurement plan approved by a governing board, which covers school boards and boards of supervisors, as you know, it can go up to that state limit, but you can pick a number less than that. And I thought we had modified that from the $2,000 some years ago.
We went up to 15, to the 15, to the 30, so we're now at $30,000.
But also, as part of that is, you're supposed to have written requests to other potential providers. You're supposed to have other requests from other potential providers.
I don't know, I don't know that it says that, but it sounds reasonable.
I'm not sure it does either, I'd have to look, that's what I thought.
So, do we need to delay it until we can get a legal opinion?
Do I need to withdraw the motion?
Either that or amend it to not exceed.
I mean, it could exceed zero at the ultimate, the way it's worded.
Right.
It could be none.
What services can we provide?
Engineering.
Consulting service. It would normally be an engineering answering the question, helping Bill if he asks for it on some of these review questions that's coming in, either from the contractors or the one, that we've got that proposal back from Lane again, third time, they want to do it for a fee.
Do we know what his rate is?
Yeah.
Thirty-five an hour.
So he's consulting as an engineer?
No, it doesn't say that. He says consultant.
Providing engineering services, which would mean he's an engineer, right?
He's using his experiences.
I don't know how you think it's Mr. Dalton or what his services are, or what his experience is, he's very well at doing that. I just don't know what services he provides. I didn't think he was an engineer, at least not a PE.
He had been and didn't renew it.
He was with an engineering firm and did
No, I think, I think at one time he had held a license and quit renewing it, is that right, Stephen?
Didn't hold a license, I do not know if it still renewed, I don't
No, it's not active. I asked him that two or three years ago.
Okay. I need to figure out the procurement side, and do you have to procure that or not?
Yeah, the reason I asked, and it could be him or it could be somebody else, but he's familiar with the situation, obviously has the county's best interest at heart, and I think everyone here would feel comfortable asking those questions.
Stephen, do you have additional information that Bill gave you?
Well, Bill had just some information here, special staff as a term employee, like we do with inspection, but we're not talking about employee here, we're talking about consultant, so.
Well, okay, as far as I'm concerned, I mean, if somebody was hired as a consultant, I think that, you know, Mr. Dalton is by far the most qualified. That being said, though, I'm not willing to make it a decision until we know where we stand legally. You know, that happened several years ago with our housing, and, you know, we ended up, you know, with problems over that. I just want to make sure that everything or anything that we do is, you know, is legal and is not going to get us, you know, run into problems down the road.
Mr. Chairman, I'll withdraw the motion pending legal consultation.
Okay, and since the chair is not here, Scott, let's put a timeline on that.
That's fine.
How long it take you to come up with an opinion?
About Friday.
Okay.
We probably need to recess this meeting, Mr. Chairman, when, when we finish today and reconvene to take action upon that. Was there a timeframe for starting this?
Yeah, it was, uh, for September the first to be able, be available to help you. And when is the first?
Next week, next Friday.
Next Friday, so we've, we've got time.
Do you want to delay advertising the project until
No.
that point in time?
No. We've had two years of delays. I don't want any more delays. Anybody on the board other than Gary wanted to lay it.
I don't want to kill it, but that's, you know, there's a difference.
Okay. I don't know if delays can kill you. Uh, Coy?
I, I can see what Gary is saying, but we don't want to do something that's not right. No, I don't want to delay it. You know, I don't want to see a penny for that.
No, that's, that's what I asked that question, if, if it was to, to review anything that was out there at this point in time. There's still plenty of time following September first to be present, uh, for the pre-construction meeting to assist with, uh, providing consultant services and obviously, uh, best interest of the county and knowledge of the project was there.
Okay, so we will recess and.
Can we, can we, anybody that we can vote on this, any approval, can you, Scott, so we don't have to come back to vote on? I mean, come back to vote on little things.
I don't know. I would say no.
Because it may turn out that we have to bid it.
You may need other information, right? You have to bid it.
Guys, you don't bid services. You get proposals and take an action.
Right. Excuse me, wrong word.
So just for clarification, what's consulting services is he providing? Engineering services and what else?
He added engineering services.
Okay.
Consultant services are a broad field, whether it's dealing with the rock quarry or whether it's dealing with people you know at DEQ or whether you're dealing with some positive things being put in a newspaper. Consulting is a real broad field, unlike your profession and doctors who have a very structured what you can and can't do. Consultants can just be consultants without naming what they consult on.
Okay.
Okay, so we're, uh, when we get to the point, we're going adjourned and take this up, um, sometime next week, if, if that's the chairman's pleasure. So let's move on.
Mr. Chairman, I have one more item under the county administrator's report. Um, and I have handed this out to you all. The economic development committee, um, reviewed, reviewed this, this multi-page agreement here. Uh, as you all remember, uh, the Branch Botanicals locating on lot number twenty, with their job and, um, capital investment, we were able to receive a grant of almost $360,000, 359,695, um, from, um, community development, lot grant through DHCD. Um, we have gone through all the steps with them, uh, getting all the information, public hearings, all that required. One of the final items has been a, uh, an agreement between County of Wiff and Branch Botanicals. Um, the committee has looked at this a few times, but the primary, the, the main section of this, uh, obviously, section two talks about that they will hire forty employees and then the capital investment, um, that they will be putting into this, uh, job. The, all issues have been addressed. Um, section nine includes that they will invest not less than $21,225,000. Those are the same numbers that are in their performance agreement that they have already signed with the county. Um, section fifteen outlines a repayment should Branch Botanicals not meet requirements. So what is required is, in order for us to proceed with CDBG, in order to get this money, we need to have an agreement with Branch Botanicals. The original draft, um, had them at a hundred percent responsibility and their indication was that they were not willing to sign that agreement because, in, in their words, they were sold that when they bought lot twenty sewer was available, they did not know they had to commit their responsibilities of, of jobs and that to them. So basically, what is written in there is that we shall not begin construction on the sewer line until Branch Botanicals obtain a building permit for their building. That way, if for any reason they do not proceed, then we have not drawn down any money from CDBG in the process. Secondly, should they meet less than 65% of the jobs or 65% of the investment outlined herein, they shall be a hundred percent responsible for, for repaying. Uh, should they meet 65% or more of the jobs and investment outlined herein, then any shortfall, uh, and we'll just use round numbers here, let's say they get 75%, so it's, uh, in, in preparation of the $100,000 that's owed back, they would pay 50% of that and the county would pay 50% of that. Um, the, uh, they have indicated preliminarily that they believe that this is acceptable to their board, um, and it, it gives us at least the ability to use the funds from CDBG to put the sewer in, um, and if they, if for some reason everything goes south and they don't construct and we've not spent any funds, then it, it stops right there.
I have a question.
Yes.
When this company first came here, I thought they was gonna have a base pay of something like $50,000. And here we're talking about $10,000 in there.
That is to meet the, uh, LMI benefit. It has to meet a minimum of that to make the CDBG require. We're talking about the salary on, uh.
Check number ten.
Yeah. That is, they have to, uh, the, the minimum amount has to be 1.5 times the federal minimum wage, and that's what the agreement is stating, and that's what CDBG requires. Uh, their, their rate of pay in the performance group, everything is above that. This just indicates it has to meet that minimum requirement.
Well, I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
This document doesn't supersede other agreements.
Yeah, this, this deals only with the sewer line. We still have a, um, performance agreement with them. We still have a, a lien that they owes us on the property and all that entirely separate from others.
And you've been in discussion with them. They, they don't have a problem that we don't start digging or spending any money until they.
That was part of my agreement with them in talking with them. I said, if, if, if you're concerned about your timeframe and all of that, then you have to accept our timeframe that we won't start doing any of the digging until you get your building permit to proceed. That way, you're not liable for any of this on that side, but you understand the time it takes us, which is basically just running from Gayoray up to there and running that, that line is all that we have to install.
Well, I, I just think the board is meeting their fiduciary responsibility to not go in debt until they make a move that, that they need us to.
Absolutely. I agree.
Any other questions? So you need action?
I would request a motion to approve this. Yes, sir. Authorize me to sign it.
Someone have a motion to start it, to sign this agreement?
Second.
Have a motion, a second or any other discussion? Here are none. Mr. Horne.
Aye.
Aye. Well, we'll wait a minute on Dr. Houseman. Did he get a phone call?
He didn't.
He did.
Stephen, parliamentary, can we go on to the next thing?
You just say he didn't vote. You got four, you got five in favor and two, two absent for the vote.
Okay, so last chair votes out, we got two absent. Dr. Houseman didn't vote, and is that adequate? All right, it carries. Stephen, sign it. What else you got?
Mr. Chairman, that's all I have from my report.
Okay. Okay, county attorney, what do you got, Scott?
Just one thing to make you aware of. The attorney's for Mr. Lamberson had made a Freedom of Information Act request a couple days before the trial started. I did a response to them, asking for clarification on communication between county staff and common attorney's office. Um, he responded yesterday with some clarification and then asking for more information, um, I guess documents between me and the common attorney's office and Mr. Fair, all related to Lamberson. So we're working on that response. Just wanted to make you aware that's happening. Not sure why he's asking for it at this point, since the trial's over. But we've got a response, so we're working on it.
Question?
Yes, sir.
How, how strong is our agreement with Lamberson?
I have to look at it again. I think it's okay. I mean, our agreement is with Mr. Lamberson.
Yeah, well, please look at it again. If there's something wrong, we need to know about it.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's all I have.
All right, thank you. District of Volks will skip Blackfoot and find out what's going on in West Worthville, Charlie?
Nothing at this time.
Steve?
East Worthville's happy at this time.
Okay. Well, Chizzle, you've got one thing. Stephen, can you find out from the engineer Becky when the contractor's gonna come back and finish that bridge job? Uh, they, they really did good, and now they hadn't been back. And it might.
That's true.
Yeah, and they might be waiting on the, they might be waiting on the paving schedule 'cause they say they're gonna pave and overlay it. They've been out re-lining most of the roads, and they did get that pavement done over in Coy's district through those dangerous curves. Let's see if the pavement cuts down on the Mount of Rex over there. Anything from, uh, lead mines?
All mine have been made. Thank you.
Speedwell?
No, I posted Stephen, sorry. I was thinking, why'd he go to Stephen?
Speed, Speedwell.
I don't have anything this time, Bill. Except maybe I need hearing aids.
I don't know. I'm watching.
And at large, it's silent on the subject. New business consent counters up first?
Make a motion to approve consent counters presented.
Have a motion as a second on the consent counter. Is there any questions? Stephen, I had one.
Yes, sir.
I was looking at the amendment. What, what's the settlement on the tractor fire? I see 1,200 and some odd dollars here. Is that, is that money we received from damage or is that what it cost us for not burning it up?
That is what we received for the damages from, on the tractor last Saturday.
What's your intent for that? You gonna get another tractor with that money and trade in or?
Uh, Mr., I have had conversations with Mr. Chris and Mr. Bowers about that, um, and, and coming up with a plan of either replacing the tractor with a used tractor or, um, they are looking if there may be another option that may be more beneficial to both of them, so we are still working on that to come up with the best plan on it. Um, the money's not enough to do everything, but we are finishing a couple of bills, waterline projects, and there may be a little bit of funding left over, and a lot of times, if there's a little bit of money left over, rural development will prove back to go towards buying a piece of equipment or whatever, and we can use that funding to match with this to close that out.
Okay, that's all I had to go. We've got up, uh, the consent counter. Do you have any questions?
No. Uh, did we do the board reports? Can I?
I'm gonna come back to you, Jeff. We got one up and a motion on the floor. We'll do that and then go back.
Okay, consent counters filed with me.
All right. All in favor, Dr. Houseman?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now we'll go back and house things in Blackfoot.
Uh, well, I'm glad you asked that. Uh, no, actually, uh, just a couple of things. One is, at, at our last meeting, I know that we requested, uh, the number of calls that the sheriff's department had gotten about, uh, about dogs, and we got that information. But I had also requested the number of calls that they got about people shooting guns. Did they have anybody? Because that was the one that I kept getting calls about. It wasn't, it wasn't dogs, it was, uh.
I will double-check with her and make certain. I, I asked for any complaints about noise ordinance, uh, and those were the responses I got back. I will confirm with her that guns.
If you could, and then just, i- if you could just send me a, an email or maybe send everybody an email, because that was the one that, uh, I didn't think that there were, were complaints, but that was the one that I got to, you know, got the phone calls about. So if you could, could find that. Uh, also, what, you know, the picnic, uh, picnic was great, uh, or I thought that it was. Uh, and you know, it, I, I know, I'm very much in favor of, uh, you know, of, of families and families being involved, but in all honesty, I think that this was better, uh, because it gave individuals an opportunity to mingle with people that they would know, I mean, if, if their, if their husbands or wives or kids are there, that they will stay in a, in a smaller group, and this gave everybody an opportunity to, uh, you know, to be out with, with everybody, and, uh, I thought that that was, I, I thought that that was well done, and that was, uh, uh, you know, that, that was a good thing. The only, uh, the only disappointing thing is that, uh, I had to leave before the cornhole tournament was, was over. I, I, I watched ESPN Sports Center. I couldn't find, uh, I couldn't find the results. I, I was looking for the bracket, but I, you know, couldn't, you know, couldn't find anything, so if, uh, if someone could tell me who won the cornhole tournament, I'll, you know, that's, that's.
I would like to say that Mother Nature won because the rain came, but Rick and Don were awarded the championship. So they were undefeated and then they were playing against four people coming back up through the losing brackets, and that final game got rained out, so.
Well, so, I know it took a long time, so you're saying that the Lord got tired of watching?
That's interesting.
Okay.
Explains why it wasn't on ESPN.
Okay, well, I guess, you know, I didn't see a rain delay or anything like that, but, uh, no, it was, it, it was well done, and I think everybody enjoyed it. I, uh, I enjoyed it, 'cause when I got home, Rhonda said, "Well, I thought you'd been home a long time." I said, "No," it was, uh, you know, I was watching them play cornhole. So anyway, congratulations on, on, on the, uh, the, the organization. Stephen, I know that you left it up to the people, and they did, uh, which was a good thing, very good thing, and they did a great job planning it, and so, uh, good, good. But if you'll let me know about the guns.
Anything else under other? If not Stephen, when do we want to adjourn to? I mean, uh, recess and deal?
Um, Scott said by this Friday. Do you want to recess to the first of next week?
Like, like on a Tuesday?
Yeah. Basically, next week is a, an off week. And what I mean by that, it's, it's sort of a fifth week in there. There are committee meetings or anything. week in there, there are committee meetings or anything scheduled in there, so, I don't know if you'd rather do it at like a 5:00 on Tuesday afternoon, something like that?
Well, let's just see what works best for everybody. Gary?
I'll pull my calendar up here in a second. You're talking about the 29th?
Yes.
I don't, I don't have anything scheduled that day.
Steve?
I'm open.
Charlie?
I'm open.
All right, I got the bus.
Okay, how late does it take you to do that?
I can be here by normally, well, it's easier if I'm here, if you do it in the morning, make it 9:30, if you do it in the evening, make it 5:30.
Well, may I ask this, if it's not gonna, we're not talking about a long meeting?
No.
Is, would it be easier to do it right at lunchtime?
No, I'm gonna do the meeting.
Yeah, it kills the middle of the day if you gotta come in from out in the country. Evening for Coy, evening, 5:30 work for you?
That's fine.
Is that too early for you, Steve?
I'd be.
Charlie? Okay. 5:30 on Tuesday, the 29th, right?
Right.
That work, Stephen?
Yes, sir.
All right, so, we're gonna recess until the 29th at 5:30 Tuesday, 5:30 PM for a short meeting, hopefully.
Mr. Chairman, I will ask permission, if the county attorney is gonna go ahead and say that there's got to be some sort of an advertisement, I will go ahead and put that advertisement out prior to our meeting, because we don't want to lose any additional days in that timeframe.
Well, I'm not practicing law, but I think the worst he can do is come up with, you gotta make solicitations, so go ahead and try to find somebody of equal stature and call them, and make Scott happy, okay? Okay, so, we're in recess until Tuesday 29th?